Welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting. As I said, we will be starting with introductions to the meeting, public comment for 20 minutes. Ellen presenting the back-to-school plan. A board discussion and vote on the back-to-school plan is the agenda for tonight's meeting. This meeting is being recorded. And I think that that pretty well covers it. From the board members, are there logistical questions for the meeting?
Nothing having to do with technical difficulties that we're having.
All right. All right, thank you. So the first topic, the first thing is the public speak. Sorry, I'm already being... I did have a slide, but I'm not even going to try it right now. So for the public speak, we're going to... Liz has a list of people who've indicated they're interested in public speaking. Each person will be providing comment to the board. You're limited for up to three minutes at most. When you're done, please go back on mute. So Liz, would you like to call the roll?
Yes, so the first person, and I'm not sure I know Padmaja was going to speak to him, is Stephen Smith. Stephen, are you able to get on?
He's going to join with the meat, so...
Okay, all right. So we'll hold off on him, Padmaja.
Okay.
The next person on the list is Almarinda. Andre, are you able to get on, Almarinda? Almarinda, you need to hit star six to unmute your phone. Are you on the phone? Okay, I know Jessica Hennessy is here, so Jessica, why don't you go? And then if Stephen or Almarinda get on, we'll have them go afterwards.
Sure. Hi, everybody. I think most of you know me. I am Jessica Hennessy. I'm a parent of a recent graduate. I have two children still at the school. I'm part of the Ed Committee, and I am also the Chair of the Special Ed Parent Advisory Committee. I have not spoken with Lynn Jarvis of Special Ed, like, not in a negative way, but specifically about how we are going to address those Special Ed and 504 needs of the students into this plan. I am sure that Ms. Lindsay has already on top of it. But I did want to just kind of point out a couple of things that haven't already been addressed that if we could do before school starts or as school starts. One, I think it would be really great for the parents to understand how one-on-one or related services are going to be provided to the students that need it. Oftentimes, you know, a child might have a paraprofessional in class with them to help them stay on task. I don't know how that is going to work in a remote learning environment. I also wanted to request that the school provides parents of Special Education students some tools and resources because if the students are at home, they are going to be, you know, almost paraprofessional-like in assisting their students. And I think that some parents could really use, I don't want to say necessarily formal training, but if there was a document that said, you know, "This is how you help them with this. This is how you can help them with that," to just further support the families. Because I know it's hard enough when they're in class and you're trying to help them from home. And then the last point is I wanted to request that before school starts that perhaps the Special Education and 504 families are given specifically for them an open forum, whether we want to call that a CPAC meeting or something else. But I think, you know, a lot of the parents that I talk to are just... They just don't know how this is all going to work. And I think the closer relationship we can make between the Special Ed families and 504 families with the staff would be really great. So that's all I had to say. Thanks, Ellen.
Thank you, Jessica. Liz?
Yes. Also, just want to make a note that Mike Finkel, being the genius that he is, is now live streaming it off of his laptop onto the Facebook Live site. So it is being streamed on Facebook Live in case anyone is listening and wants to watch. So next up on the list is Sujatha Krishnan. Sujatha, are you on the phone?
Liz, I just wanted you to know, Steve is online.
Okay. All right, I'll call him next. Sujatha, are you able to get on?
Can you hear me?
Yep, you're on. You're on.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for providing the opportunity to comment on this complex and unprecedented discussion. I know you have a tall task in front of you. I would like for the board and administration to consider the need for in-person labs, especially for science classes in both remote and hybrid settings, whatever is being proposed today. I just wanted to stress that household resources and equipment do not replicate scientific experiments to ensure the understanding of complex topics, maybe in small settings or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sujatha. Okay, so next up, Steve, are you on now?
I am here, finally.
Excellent. All right. You're up. You're the floor.
Okay, so for those of you who don't know me, I'm Stephen Smith. I'm about to start my 10th year at AMSA as an English teacher. I teach AP Lit, Shakespeare, and pretty much all the things under the sun at one time or another. So on behalf of where I stand on this, and really, all of the teachers in my close orbit, we are 100% behind the remote opening and teaching remotely. It is the closest thing that we can get to the real thing in terms of having everybody together live, everybody together as a unit, to trade ideas, to trade comments, for them to ask questions of each other, and us as instructors and educators to answer things in the moment, which just cannot be done in the hybrid plan. And this is really, obviously, nothing beats in-person with everybody in the class at the same time. This is the next best thing. I think it's the best way to do this. I give the school credit for having the guts to do it because I know there's a lot of public pressure to get kids back in the classroom, even if it's, you know, once every three weeks or something like that. But I think that's a bad idea. Also, the school has worked very closely because I've been the leader of the union since we've organized. And I think that the school has done a great job of working with the union to make sure that this will work in terms of the contract and that everybody is treated fairly and that the kids are still getting the education that they need at the same time that we all want them to have. So I think this is absolutely the best way to go. The school has handled it in the proper way. We're all pretty pleased with this. And I would love to have this be remote until we are back in a position where we can all come back together personally. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay. Sorry, before I take the next person, Sarah, if you're able to mute any phones that you see there's noise coming off of, I'm not sure if you can or not. If you can, it's a perfect deal. Okay, sorry.
Just need to keep reminding people, if you're not speaking, to please mute your phones, especially those that are calling in.
Yes.
Because we hear things at home, star six.
Actually, Ellen, Sarah should be able to do that as a mixture.
She can be able to mute the other people.
Yeah, Ellen, Sarah can do that.
Can you do... So if she... I haven't been able to do it in the past. If she clicks on the little people symbol that says 110 next to it, Sarah, and then...
She can right-click on it. She can see the mic signal, mic symbol over there, and she can select whichever one is green. She can mute them.
Yeah, we practiced this last night, Sarah, remember?
On the calendar.
Ellen, we practiced this with Sarah last night, so if you need to help, let us know.
I'm aware of this, but it's...
Is it 110, 112 people?
No, there's only one or two, and it's hard to tell if they're actually a board member or not.
I would just mute them. Don't worry.
Yeah.
Next up, we're going to have Sujatha. Oh, I'm sorry, did we just do Sujatha? I think I did. Tom Azaredo, Tom, can you... Are you available?
Yes, I am.
Excellent. Thank you, Tom. You're up.
So I won't repeat the part that Stephen said. I do want to say two things. First, that as a teacher, I and all my colleagues recognize that in-class teaching is the ideal, and we wish that's what we could be doing. However, given the circumstances, I believe the online start, doing it extremely well, having learned how to make an effective vehicle for real education, will be something that will start off the year properly. And so when we do transition to a school setting, we already have a good basis for all that comes afterwards. And as part of that, you know, in this strange cloud that we've all been in for half a year, there is this silver lining for AMSA. We were rather undeveloped in how to use technology at the school, in the classroom setting, as an instrument of research. Basically, we were not able to do things you might expect a school focused on math and science to be able to do. And I feel we have learned a huge amount about how to use technology, not to replace in-class teaching, because they cannot do that, and if you try, it will do it poorly, but as a supplement, a complement that will allow us to add some features. They'll make further instruction after this is all over and we're laughing again at life. They'll make the way we teach better than just the pure classroom vision that we had prior to this. So it's something I look forward to being able to do in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I have one more person on the list who indicated that they wanted to make public comment. That's Almarinda. Andre, Almarinda, are you on the phone? If you are, try hitting star six so you can unmute yourself, please. All right, sorry, I don't think she's on the phone, so I think we're going to have to skip over her for now. And is there anyone else who did not send an email who is interested in making a public comment?
Liz, I have a text from my neighbor who's a parent. Could I read that? It's pretty quick.
Yep, sure.
This is Jess. So this is my neighbor. She has three children at AMSA, and she just wanted to comment that when we go to a hybrid model, she's concerned with the effect of siblings on the one-third, one-third, one-third with three kids, and how she wants to make sure that the school is addressing this, especially since if her kids are on alternating weeks, she's maximizing the... If the intent is to reduce exposure, that by having... If her kids are all on different weeks, she's essentially exposing her family 100% of the time. So she's just asking that the school kind of make sure that they consider that.
Thanks, Jess.
Can I...
If it matters for the record, that was Teresa Martinez.
Okay.
Hello? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, can I add any comment or is it too late?
Yes, please identify yourself, and you have the floor for three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Bhaskar Kurematta, and we have a graduating senior, very proud of going to AMSA, and we have a sophomore next year. I mean, I just wanted to add that, you know, has the kind of board and management thought through how the spring online teaching went? I know we had several limitations, but I think, you know, ensuring that we have the... If we do go into online model or a hybrid model, ensuring that the rigor of academics is the same as kind of in-person teaching, I think that will really help the parents because prior to this pandemic, we were kind of very attuned to the kind of schedule of the classes, the homework. And when we went online, I think we had to rely on our kind of, you know, impromptu schedule, so to speak, at home to help our children kind of attend those classes. So I think we definitely support whatever decision the management and the board will take based on all the excellent feedback and the collaboration they have received so far. But whether it's starting hybrid and kind of waiting until how the results develop, I think having that online structure, fully kind of the school day structure, I think that's very important for the, at least for our children, to be able to kind of, you know, follow the academics and not miss the year. As parents, our concern is also that a lot of private schools are going, you know, pretty much full classroom teaching, and that kind of really puts our children at a disadvantage, even though all the public school systems are kind of facing the same issue. So that's another point that, you know, just wanted to add to the discussion here. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Just I'd like to...
Liz, I have some emails, comments from parents, if I can share.
I have a comment.
I'd like to do Maura first, and then the person who said I had a comment next.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. So I have an email here from Lorraine Cash. The comment is in relation to fall sports. She says, I'm just going to read it. Luckily, the MIAA has not yet voted to cancel all fall sports, instead deciding to follow the guidance of DEES. My concern is that AMSA will just decide to cancel fall sports regardless of the decisions being made by the other organizations. If AMSA were to decide to go full remote, would they just automatically cancel fall sports, even if they are still being held? That is her concern. She believes that they should still attempt, or I'm reading it. I believe they should still attempt to support fall sports. I understand there may be logistics issues like busing, but maybe we can find ways around that, like carpooling. Anyway, to summarize, I would hope that AMSA would make every effort to conduct fall sports instead of just taking the easy way out and canceling them. And that... I do have one other comment. It was more of a suggestion and a question about considering a fully online curriculum method during this pandemic, and they gave an example that I will share with the board about curriculum delivery for K-12 grades in Kerala. And it's basically through YouTube, and it's kind of a 24/7 broadcast availability. So it seems interesting. I will share it with the board so that we all have the same information. And that's it from parents as of now.
Can I add a comment?
I had a comment that you said you would talk to me next.
Sorry, we need to hear the woman first. She was supposed to be following Maura, and then the gentleman after that.
Hi. So my name's Rebecca Gray. I have an incoming sixth grader to the AMSA system. I am concerned because I haven't seen plans at all before tonight, and we are having a public comment section at the beginning of the presentation instead of at the end, which makes zero sense to me. Did you send the plan? Did I miss that? Thank you.
So can I go now?
Yes.
My name is Ty Rollin. I have two students at AMSA, seventh and eighth graders. I would just like to reaffirm that we would... We really want to respect the health of our teachers. We think that if they get sick, then that will just replicate across the quality of education that we're getting. So we really want a focus on that to be where decisions are made. And so if that means that we're remote learning, so be it, because at least we have teachers that are teaching, and they're not sick. Secondly, through the experience that we've been having throughout the year, our children have continued to do learning through RSM. RSM made a one-week pivot to support COVID and to go completely remote. Their education, I think, is an example of what others can do. And I think their ability to teach and use Zoom and other technologies is something we should foster at AMSA and make sure that we can do what they can do. And I do agree that at AMSA, just hearing the school and the charter for it, I do think we should be technically capable of running remote, as per one of the professors earlier tonight indicated that this is a moment where we should be able to support technology and continue to run our classes. Thank you for listening.
All right, thank you very much. We've got about five minutes left of open speak. Are there other people that wish to speak at this point?
Roger, this is Maura. I just, I want to make a comment sort of on behalf of parents and some of the feedback I'm getting. I want to acknowledge that, yes, this is definitely frustrating for everybody that wants to participate. And as a parent and as a board member, I'm excited that everyone is trying to participate. My email is always open for comments after the fact. And I also want to share, just sort of in the public realm, open comment is typically always held at the beginning of a meeting, even before things are presented. I do want to share, though, that the plan was briefly shared by Ellen. Correct me if I'm incorrect on this, but it was shared from our board meeting just a couple of weeks ago. And that sort of has given a lot of folks the opportunity to kind of send comments and gear things. So I just wanted to share that, so we're kind of all on the same page there. Thanks.
It was shared on YouTube, and I believe Jess Hennessy actually...
I'd like to make a comment, please.
Put the link for that on AMSA Chat also.
I'd like to make a comment.
If just a moment, this is Jess Hennessy. I just wanted to kind of respond as well. So I have been keeping, I mean, I know Facebook is not like official channels or anything, but I have been kind of posting the publicly available information on Facebook. For anybody that is not following AMSA Chat, or if they happen to be a Special Ed parent or interested in Special Ed, there is a AMSA Friends of the Pack.
But I just want to comment on that. I think that there's a lot of people on this call. I have a daughter that's going into the seventh grade, and we weren't... Nothing was said about a hybrid or any inclination that we weren't going back to school.
Well, let me, I have a few more things to say, and then I think we can maybe... I don't know if we addressed those questions. The other ways to get involved is being on the Ed Committee. So Liz Sol is the Chair of that committee. That is an open committee, just like, you know, open meeting laws. Anybody can join those. We have certainly been talking about this for the last several months along with the administration. I will certainly take it on my, you know, on my own to-do list to just make sure that everybody is aware of when Ed Committee meetings are happening. But, you know, it's... I'm not trying to make excuses or anything like that, but, you know, we definitely have been, you know, in a public way, talking about all of these issues.
And I want to be clear, I'm not challenging what's being said tonight. I guess maybe other parents might feel the same way. What I'm saying is that some of the comments that have already been made have inclined that people know exactly what's going to happen before we knew what was going to happen. So we're making comments on something, you're going to say, "This is coming into effect." We don't even have a comment on it. So what we're saying is, it doesn't matter. I guess maybe other parents might feel the same way. What I'm saying is that some of the comments...
We just lost somebody, whoever they were speaking.
Sorry, I unmuted myself. Let me just repeat what I was saying. So what I'm saying is, there's been several comments that were made tonight that made me feel like those people knew exactly what was going on. So the people that like myself... Right. So what we hear now...
So can I say something? So...
Sorry, I unmuted myself. Yeah, we definitely have it delay over here. But essentially, what I'm saying is, no matter what we say, you guys already made your decision. So why are we speaking?
May I just add, Roger, so this is Ellen Lindsay speaking, the Executive Director of the school. So there's been a plan. We've been taking direction from the Commissioner of Education at the Department of Education in Malden. And he has given us tasks to do, deadlines, and we have been following those. He has actually asked us... One moment, please.
Yes, please let Ellen have the floor. Everybody else, please mute.
We were actually asked by Commissioner Riley to not publicize our plans. Schools that did so actually weren't following the request of the Commissioner, who asked us not to publicize plans until the beginning of August. And part of that was, we were told we needed to create a plan with three options. And we needed to do a feasibility study. All of this was covered in my board report in July. And then at that point, we were told we needed to actually have, create a plan that showed the three options and something that we were leaning towards. And that plan had to be voted on by our Board of Directors or school committee, depending upon if it was a district school. And so that's the process we're actually going through this evening, is the creation of the plan that we were told to create by the Commissioner himself. We were asked to not publicize it before the beginning of August. We were told to have it voted on and put on our website by August 10. That has actually been, the date was pushed out earlier today until the 14th of August. So we're just following the recommendations and the requests from the Commissioner, which I've been very involved with, the calls with him. So that's where this is coming from. This does not mean that we're not going to be flexible, listen to feedback. But what we're talking about here is, these are the three plans. What can AMSA do within those three plans? And what are we leaning towards the fall? And it's this document, which will show up on our website by Monday, that the board is voting on this evening.
All right, thank you, Ellen. I think there's... This has been a changing environment. You know, the rules change every week, every day, every hour. I mean, I wasn't even aware that they pushed out the announcement date by a few days, official publishing date. I think a couple of things I'd stress, this is going to be an evolving plan. This is not cast in stone from tonight's vote. We are going to continue to work and improve, working... The administration's going to work and improve this plan as the year goes on. It's not, "This is it, and we're done." The administration has two family forums coming up that will be posted. Go to the AMSA website to see them. They are August 18 at 1:00 p.m. and August 19 at 6:00 p.m., one in the afternoon, one in the evening. You can also reach out to Maura Webster. Again, go to the website, mwebster@amsa.cS.org. Or you can email Ellen directly. Again, her email address is available on the website. So there's a lot of opportunities. We have a board meeting coming up in two weeks. There's another public speak then. So we value your input. We understand your frustrations. This is a trying time, and I think if we all work together, we'll come out better for it. So with that, I'd like to end the public speak for this meeting. Invite you to listen on mute. So with that, I'd like to end the uh public speak for this meeting, invite you to listen on mute. And uh hand the baton to Ellen to present.
Okay. Also, just one other quick thought that I was thinking about um is that um
I'd like to end the speech for this meeting, invite you to listen on mute or and.
Hmm. I'm not sure what just happened there. Um, but that we, we have been emailing um about this. We did do a parent survey. Um, collected all kinds of information uh information from a hundred and s- hundred and one um respondents to that survey. We talked very specifically about the different options, about the hybrid model, about um uh and about the the remote model. So there's been communication out there, uh certainly, and if someone missed it, we we certainly apologize. Um, okay, so what I'm going to do now is I'm going to present. A tab. And if someone just lets me know what, if you, if you're seeing that yet.
Yes, we can see it, Ellen.
Yep.
Okay, all right. So for those of you who are listening and haven't been to one of our board meetings before, um, I have, I've mentioned this before, and I I will mention again, it's a very strange experience for me. Um, because all I see right now are my, are my slides. And um, and uh so I'm kind of talking to myself in my kitchen, in my cabin, with two dogs walking around and a husband. So um, it's uh, it's hard to not have feedback, so I will do the best I can here. So I want to welcome everyone out tonight um to our Board of Trustees' vote on our COVID back-to-school plan. And um, these are the slides I want to share with you. Um, I would feel um very remiss if I didn't start out uh to to talk a little bit about how grateful I am for the people um that I've been, had the opportunity to work with all the years that I've been at AMSA. But um, you know, particularly during this difficult time. It it um, it's in moments of crisis that you find out the people who are going to stay with you and and work with you. And um, and really, um, it brings people together. And I think that we have seen that over and over again during this COVID situation. So I I first wanted to express um, you know, my gratitude for every, each and every single member of the AMSA community. Um, all of our our families, our our students, our teachers, um, our administrators. Uh, it's, it's, it's an absolute honor for me to to work with all of you. And uh so thank you um for all that you do. And also for all the voices that I can hear in this document. Um, the document that you will, that I'm going to talk about tonight, that you will see, um, the board has had received it yesterday. But um, when I read that document, I can hear um people's comments and people's suggestions and ideas. We had over sixty-five folks that worked on this, um, all AMSA adults. Um, and and I can hear their voices. And I just am so grateful for all the members of the different committees that we had and how willingly um they they supported uh this work and how passionate they were about it. So grateful. Also grateful for um all the feedback that we've received over the last six months, for the emails of support that I've gotten, parents who have reached out to me. Um, I save every single email that I get. Um, people have really been so kind um and supportive, and I appreciate that. And all those who text with me late into the night um, as I'm brainstorming things and you're brainstorming things, um, the long email chains and brainstorming ideas that we've had. Um, it, each one of those things has helped to make this plan uh better and more detailed. I also want to thank all of those who were involved in hours and hours of editing for this final plan, the dedication, passion, caring, and the absolute love that I have felt from the people around me that I work with so regularly. I want to thank Mike Finkel, who always seems to make sense out of the things that I um I want to say, but don't always um come out the the way that I'd like them to. Uh, he has a way of polishing those things and um and adding his special flair to all that he does. I especially also want to thank um Brianna Murphy, my Vice Principal, and Anders, my forever friend, um, for sticking with me, especially over these last two weeks. I will be forever grateful for the two of them and for all of their personal time um that they've given up to support me. Um, thank you. Okay, so here's a quick uh report um overview. And this is what we're going to look at tonight. First, we're going to talk very quickly about the board meeting from July 23rd and some of the things we talked about there, just to refresh some memories. Um, I will also be talking a little bit about some important upcoming dates that we want to keep in mind. And then we're going to look at this um fall uh back-to-school plan, which the board will be voting on tonight. Uh, when we talked about this um in July, we talked about a four-step plan. It's more of a three-step uh phased approach now. And we're going to discuss the different um parts of it. The remote learning program and the changes and that we've made to this, I think you're going to see that it's going to be excellent. Um, our Flex Day Mondays, we're going to talk about the block schedule that we're, we've uh set up. Uh, attendance, assignments, assessments, and grading. We'll also um touch briefly on student supports, IEP 504's ELL and counseling. And also, we have some new ideas for communication, uh which is going to be so important through the fall. So just quickly looking, uh looking again and talking about the July 23rd board meeting, which um was recorded and is on YouTube. Um, we talked about the goals, and the goals, uh uh our number one goal is always, always has been the health and safety of our community. Um, all of our adults, all of our kids and their families. And we know in this COVID situation, it is also about what the kids are transmitting potentially between themselves and then bringing home, bringing home to family members who have immunity issues, to to grandparents and on to to those who are vulnerable. And we need to think about all of those people. We also um have a goal of providing an excellent AMSA academic experience, because that's what we're, that's what we are, that's what we're for, that's what we love to do, is to work with students and to teach them. But I also want to keep in mind, as as both Steve and Tom mentioned, that AMSA is a, what I refer to as a brick-and-mortar school, right? We, we are a school uh that that our students thrive, and part of our special sauce is putting them in front of our wonderful, passionate teachers, right? That's what we do. That's why we've been so so successful for so many years. It's, it's having that one-on-one interaction and those small group interactions and classroom interactions between our bright, wonderful students and our passionate, dedicated teachers. And we are committed to that. We want to get back to that as soon as we feel that it's safe. Um, and we want to return to school. Um, we miss, as adults, we miss being together, and we miss seeing your kids. And so that's always going to be um our 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 goal, is to get back as soon as we can, as soon as we feel that it's safe. Um, and I'm also going to um review, let's see, um, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we, we've had our back-to-school committee. I talked about the, all the adults and the people who were involved in our committees. Um, the main committee, Mike and Mike Noraki, the principal and I, were were um the overseers of the committees. And we had facilitators, facilitators. We had Kate and Anders, um, Kate Driver and Anders Lewis over the academics and academic support. Brianna did the um academic operations. Uh, Anthony Montesian uh was over the operations side of things. Um, and we had Erica, uh our IT Director, who um, who worked with Petrowski, who worked with the IT matters with a, with a committee. And within those committees, we had, um, it's actually, I didn't want to leave anyone out, but it was actually about sixty-seven folks, plus uh Mike Noraki and myself. During um part of that was the surveys that I, that I spoke about. Um, and we did do a a survey with um our faculty. We did um, and and the administrators and staff, the the entire um adult community, with our families and um and with uh students as well, to to get feedback from all of them. And we also did, um, Anthony Montesian and his, his crew from Operations um team did a feasibility study of our building. So what they did was they went in and they looked at the sizes um of the rooms, looked at the DEES recommendations on how um the students had to be spaced three to six feet apart, and what did that actually mean for for our buildings. Um, I I I wasn't necessarily expecting a hundred and fifty folks to show, to to show to this meeting. I probably would have given more uh information uh from the July meeting. But if you're interested, I do go into detail about the uh feasibility and the issues that we have with our building. Um, but I will briefly uh say to you that in order to fit twenty-five students into a room three feet apart, now, there's a lot of people out there that don't recommend three feet apart, but if you were to squeeze them in at three feet apart, you need at least seven hundred and fifty square foot room to fit, say, twenty-four to twenty-five students and a teacher into a room. Now, AMSA has fifty-eight rooms in three buildings. Of those fifty-eight rooms, only twelve of them, only twelve of them are actually seven hundred and fifty square feet or larger. The rest of them are between, or forty-six, are between seven hundred and forty-three square feet and three hundred and fifty-seven square feet. Okay, so you can understand some of the challenges that we have there. Um, add in um our aging HVAC system and the lack of windows, because they are office buildings. Um, we will have a, would have a very, very, well, it it, we cannot fit a hundred percent of our kids in the school. Um, and that, that's just where where it falls out too. But we did a full feasibility study. We had a crew of folks in, um, and they worked on that for us. Um, let's see, and then um, I proposed at the time a four-phased reopening plan. If you listen to the YouTube video that of um, of that meeting, you'll hear that that there was some suggestions made. Um, and we, we looked at that. We heard those suggestions, actually thought they were, they were great, and we have adopted um those, and you're going to hear about those in just a moment. Just a quick reminder, we did do that parent's survey, and I'm only pulling one question out at the moment, um, but we did do a full survey. And this was uh responses as of August 5th. We had seven hundred and one responses. This doesn't necessarily mean seven and, seven hundred and one homes, um, because in, it's, it's possible that in in certain homes, um, we had, you know, a a of both uh parents uh respond. But um we, we feel that this was at least six hundred um different homes. The question is, if it was decided that a fully remote schedule was the safest option for students and staff, would you be in favor of this schedule? And they added note, it is important to note that this would be a much more structured, um structured than our approach this past spring. And the responses were seventy-seven percent of our parents said yes, that if we've, if we, it was decided that this was the safest option for our students and staff, that yes, they would be in favor of this. That was five hundred and forty responses. And twenty-two point nine seven percent said that they would not be in favor of it. Um, some important upcoming dates. Um, Tuesday, August 18th at 1:00 PM, and Wednesday, August 19th at 6:00 PM. Um, Mike Noraki, Brianna Murphy, and and I will be at um, will have, hold remote family forums. Any questions that you have, you can send them in ahead of time or speak to us during those forums. You'll be getting um remote links, and we'll um, we'll be offering those two different times, one in the afternoon and one in the evening um for, for families. Um, Jess, I love that idea, um, this, I'm referring to Jess Hennessy, of of doing a forum-type um activity also for special education in 504 students, and we will, I will pass that, that um uh comment along. That's a good one. Um, also, we have, um, you may have heard in the news that uh the Department of Education, Commissioner Riley, has reduced the school year from one hundred and eighty days to one hundred and seventy days. Um, and with the express purpose that I, that the teachers would receive ten extra days of professional development time to work on their curriculum. Um, and to, we'll be learning Zoom, and we have, we have a number of Google Classroom. We have a number of professional developments that are set up. And so the teachers will be participating in that professional development. They'll also have a lot of time to actually work on lesson planning um for the fall, and that will be held between August 26th and September 14th, which means that our very first uh day of school for all students will be on Tuesday, September 15th. But we will have a um sixth grade and a new student remote orientation on Monday, September 14th. And uh we will reach out to those new students with more information. Um, but we will have our very first day of school on Tuesday, September 15th. And here is the beginning of our um back-to-school plan, our three-stepped phased approach, which means we're going to be phasing into a full-time back-to-school situation, which is what our goal is. We all want to be together again. Okay, here we are. So we are proposing and are hoping for an affirmative vote this evening to begin remote learning on Tuesday, September 15th. Then, the next step would be to continue during the months of September, October, to monitor the COVID um virus using reliable scientific data, using the transmission rate trends, which they've been trending up in Massachusetts. Um, if you've been following the transmission rates, you will, you'll see that. Um, and also the impact of the hybrid learning system that will be used by other Massachusetts schools. Um, we're following very closely what other schools and what other districts are doing. We do know that that there are private schools that are going back um full-time, and they are doing this in part to take advantage of the fact that parents may um en- enroll their um their children in those programs. And um that's obviously is a, is a family choice. There are a a number of um district schools who will be starting in a hybrid model of some kind. And it will, over time, it will prove itself that it's either a safe thing to do or it's not. And um we um, I in particular, I'm I'm gonna, I'm going to own this. Um, I am not willing to allow our teachers and our kids to be guinea pigs in a political um campaign. And I want our community, I want our teachers, I want our administrators. I have fifteen percent of the adults in my school who are fifty-nine and over. They're in high-risk categories, and I want to make sure that they are all safe. We will watch very closely what is happening in the schools around us and throughout Massachusetts to see if their hybrid systems work. And if they work, then we will look at that for the beginning or middle of November. Um, but we will also be looking at all the scientific data. I'm finding at this point, it is very conflicting. It ranges, you can find data to support absolutely anything you want to prove right now. Um, and people are using it very liberally. And so uh to me, the only way that you can actually uh know what this virus is going to do is by actually watching to see what it does and how it affects the schools once they are actually in session, whether it's with all the students there, um, or whether there's half the students there. We need to always keep in mind that AMSA has limited facilities. Our rooms are small, and they don't, their windows don't open, and HVAC, our aging HVAC system is always going to be um a limiting factor for us. So once we have watched the data, we've watched how this has played out in other school systems, and we feel that, that it's been proven that schools are not um an air, uh, are not a mechanism for this virus to um spread readily. Um, then um, i- if everything looks safe and it looks fine, then we will pull our committees together again. We will discuss with our teachers. We will talk to our families, and we will get feedback on a hybrid model. There's pros and cons to a thirty-three percent, which is like a rotates every third week as opposed to a fifty percent. Um, uh, we do not want to make a decision between those two models at this point. We want to have a lot more conversations about that, and we will do that as the weeks and months um roll on. Now, um, one of the the things that we, we know so much more about remote learning now, and we um, you know, we experienced a light version in the, in the spring. And we received a lot of direction from the Department of Education on how they wanted that to play out. And I think at the time, none of us really knew, obviously, what what was going to happen with COVID, the impact emotionally to all of us physically. And so um, it was a, it was a real um light AMSA experience um in the spring. But that experience is over. Um, we are going in um to this uh fall with a program that is going to look as much like an in-school AMSA program as you most possibly can get. And you're going to see that as we talk about where we're going back to the Student Parent Handbook and those policies- And those policies are going to be in place. Attendance is going to be taken. This is going to be highly structured. We're expecting your students to be fully engaged. Our teachers are going to be fully engaged. They are going to offer your children the very best education they can have. And it is going to look very much like AMSA, except your kids will be doing it online from home. We understand there'll be a lot of screen time here. We have put breaks in place, not only for your children, but also for our teachers. Um, we have taken our union contract into consideration, and we believe we've come up with an excellent plan. I have every, every bit of faith in my teachers, our teachers, that they can produce um, an excellent educational experience for all of our children. So this is what it looks like, the schedule. Minimum of 170 days, this is from the Department of Education, and 935 hours per year. Typically, it's 180 with 990 hours, that's five and a half hours per day. And you're going to see, as I said, that, that AMSA, we're going to follow as many of our policies as we possibly can, um, just the way that we have when we're at school. It's going to be highly structured, you're going to see a copy of the schedule. It will be from 7:55 in the morning, your little cherubs will need to be up and on their computers at 7:55 until 2:45 with breaks that you will see. We will have our regular eight periods, so the schedule looks the same as it would if your children came to school, except those eight periods are going to be longer, and they're going to be spread over two days. So they'll have four on one day, and they're going to have four on the next day, but the classes are going to be longer. So they're going to have four classes per day, 70 minutes per class. And then they're also in between there, they're going to have two 30-minute academic workshops. That's probably a little bit, um, easier to explain when you actually look at the schedule, which we will do on the next slide. But during those academic workshops, they need to, um, they need to stay logged into their computer, they can take off their camera, they can turn that off, but the teacher will also be there for available for questions. So if you're a math student and it's during your academic workshop and, and Mr. Azeredo has, has given you a number of, of problem sets to do, and you're working away at your kitchen table on those and, and your child gets, has a question, Mr. Azeredo may have his camera up, but he is there and he can answer the question. So these are workshop, um, and, and support time for kids, um, to, to work through some of their work. Um, and then there's also going to be two 15-minute breaks and then a 40-minute lunch. So on Mondays, we're going to have, Mondays are going to be flex days. And these flex days have very specific purpose. They will, on Monday mornings, we're going to have Monday morning check-ins. The teachers are going to have small groups between 12 and 14 students to one teacher. It will be assigned, and on Monday mornings, they're going to log in at 9:05. And they're going to have kind of a homeroom check-in, right? It's a time to organize for the week. Maybe the teacher has some, some reminders. And, um, just reminding students to, to, you know, check their schedule, to look at their, their homework, how is everybody feeling, and kind of getting a visual, um, read on how, how the kids are doing. If they, they see that they have a student who's, you know, despondent or having a difficult time, they can let the, the, um, the student's school counselor know. So it's a kind of a visual check, but also just kind of a, um, you know, okay, everybody, let's get ready for the week, kind of a conversation. And, um, this, these Monday flex days can also be used for group work, for students doing homework. Also, extra help sessions. Support can be offered to struggling students, there could be extra work done for our special education, ELL students during this time. Um, Brianna and Mike and I are pretty excited about, um, our class meetings. Um, with, um, the, the different classes with, Mike has just set up a whole schedule of when we're going to, um, have class meetings with the kids, which would be great to, to, um, put us in front of them more often. It'll also be a time for communication with students and families. Um, the teachers, this will be a day that they can eat, do emails home. They're going to set, uh, do the update grades and things like that on Plus Portal. So there'll be a lot of work done that day. And, um, there'll be, uh, you know, alternating staff meetings or department meetings and, and things like that. So this is, um, this is the schedule that we're looking at. Um, you can see at the top, we started, if we look through Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, you're starting at the top, 7:55 to 9:05, that's your 70-minute period. Um, on Tuesdays, you know, you, they start in first period. And then, then they have that academic workshop uh, from 9:05 to 9:35 where they're actually working on assignments and, and things like that. And as I said, the teacher's there for help. And then they, they have a 15-minute break. Then they go into their B1 schedule. And they'll, they'll obviously get their schedule ahead of time. They go into their B1 class, they're there for 70 minutes, and then they go in for lunch. So everyone gets 40 lunch offs, 40 minutes off-screen, everyone takes lunch at the same time. And then we go back on-screen at 11:40 to 12:50 for third period. Academic workshop again, a break, and then the last period we have from 1:35 to 2:45. Now, part of the academic workshop period is also just a time to kind of decompress a little bit, to get off, you know, they can turn their cameras off. Now, when they're in class for like a period, um, they need to be on-screen. Unless they have some type of, um, accommodation. Uh, they will need to be on-screen. Uh, but during the academic workshop, they can go off-screen, um, and they can, um, they can do work, um, in another way. But, um, so that's what it looks like. And then on Wednesday, so, you know, you can see the second half of the schedule, usually it's A through H. Uh, now it's A through D and E through H, and then it's those are the day ones and then the day twos. Um, for new parents, that probably doesn't, maybe not, doesn't make a lot of sense, but some classes meet every other day, which is why there's a, a, an odd and an even day. Um, we can talk more about that during, we're also going to have a new student and sixth grade parent orientation with Mike and Brianna and myself to answer all kinds of questions that you might have. So just write, write them down and we'll, uh, we'll answer them for you when we, when we do that for you. Okay.
Ellen, can I just, um, comment really quickly on the schedule?
Sure.
Kind of, there's a blue week and an orange week, so the following week, the periods will reverse. So that on Tuesday, students will have D1 first and then go to C1, B1, A1, just so that you're mixing up the time a little bit. Um, you know, as students probably know, and as teachers know too, it can be really hard to have the same group of students first period every day or last period every day. So that keeps a little bit of the spirit of our normal rotating schedule, um, where, but obviously not, you know, quite the same and easier to manage too. So you'll either have your A1 class at 7:55 or the following week you would have it at, uh, 1:35.
Thank you, Brianna, thank you very much. Um, and you'll see, um, when we publish the, the actual document, um, that both of those schedules are in there too, along with the academic, um, schedule for the year and the, the change in the first day of school. Um, it's all in there, um, in the, in section H. All right, attendance, attendance is very, very important. And attendance was not as important, honestly, I'll be honest, it wasn't, and it was intended that way by the state. Um, it was not as important in the spring as it is now. Um, attendance is mandatory. This is, this is school again, this is real school. Your students are expected to be in class. Um, and we will be taking attendance every morning. Um, the receptionist, if you've, if, if they'll be absentee, the absentee line will be reactivated. If you don't call your, your student in, if you, if you forget, um, or you didn't realize they slept in, you will get a phone call from one of our receptionists, from Kathy or Sandy or Margie. And, um, so attendance will be taken, not only every morning in first period, uh, but also period attendance to make sure that they, they are coming to every single one of their classes. And so they're, they're not going to have the option. Um, unless, of course, if you are, have sickness or anything else going in your home, um, that's where the absentee line comes into, into effect. These will be the same, um, the same absenteeism policies, the same attendance policies that are currently in the AMSA student handbook that's on our website. And the new one for the coming year is, is already, um, up on the website. And so, um, once again, we are trying to follow the policies that we've always had in place. Attendance is mandatory. If your child is sick and can't make it to school, you need to call them in. Um, student participation is expected and it will be tracked. Um, the camera must be on at all times during class, unless there is a pre-approved accommodation. Um, and as I said, all other attendance policies, um, do apply. We know that, that last spring, we had a number of students who were working. Um, and many of them were, were working, um, in, in essential, uh, jobs, um, in grocery stores and that. And they were, they were working many hours a day and they were excused from a lot of things. That will not be the case, um, this year. Uh, they will not be excused for taking driver's ed, um, in the middle of the day. Uh, this is real school and we expect your student to be, um, in school 170 days, 935 hours. All right, so assignments, assessments and grading. Homework exams and projects will be used to assess students' progress, just the way that they were, um, before. We were home in the spring. And, uh, they will continue to be, the expectations will continue to be high. Um, we are responsible and feel a moral obligation to educate your children. Uh, that's our job, that's what we do, we take it seriously, and we're going to continue to take it seriously this fall. Um, we have homework expectations, the amount is actually outlined in the program of studies. And you can click on that, there's a link, um, in the plan to that, so you can see, it will say, well, for, you know, AP, um, US history, you can expect to get this much homework per week. And so those will be back, um, and, and used, the teachers are not going to be limited. Uh, they were severely limited in the, in the spring, um, on recommendations from the state. And that will not be the case. We are going back to a full AMSA curriculum. We are not buying, um, there's a lot of schools out there that are, that are buying, um, kind of canned programs that, that teach students certain standards. That is not what AMSA is doing. AMSA is, uh, taking the curriculum that we, um, that we have created and that we're very, very proud of, that we've had great success with. And that is the, um, expectations that we will go forward with in the fall. I think that's what you expect from us, it certainly is what we expect from ourselves. As far as grading is concerned, uh, oh, excuse me, as far as homework, uh, late policies are always, and have always been set by the departments, it's different. Um, depending upon if we're talking about math or if we're talking about, um, English. So, uh, the students, once again, should always check with the teachers, um, around the, around late policies for homework. Um, and our teachers are very compassionate, um, good people. And so whenever there's an issue, students should always communicate with them and tell them what's going on in their lives. Um, and, um, and work, and work through those things with them if there's a, a, a problem. Um, when we're talking about grading, our letter, we're going back to our letter grading system that we had, um, before COVID started. All letter grades will be earned. Letter grades are not given, they, they are earned by our students. Um, we will continue, our grading will be consistent, once again, with our AMSA policies and procedures that are in the handbook. Uh, grades will be updated on Plus Portal by weekly. Teachers will work on those on Mondays, that will be part of the, um, the, the routine that, that they begin to, um, work within. And also, we will have quarterly progress reports for C-, and below, just as usual. Um, and they will come in, um, through your email, as they always have. So.
Ellen, do you want to jump in real quick?
Go, go for it, Mike.
All right, it's Mike, I don't know if you can see me or not.
I can't, but I know your voice.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I, I just wanted to add in there, um, all of the policies and expectations that Ellen has just covered. By the way, to all the new families, my name is Mike Noraki, I'm the principal over at AMSA, I've been at the school now for 10 years. I'm looking forward to meeting all of you, um, and your students, uh, that are entering the school. Um, all the policies and expectations, uh, that you just outlined, Ellen. We, you mentioned the class meetings that we'll be holding this year. Uh, we're going to be scheduling six class meetings, those are individual grade level meetings. We'll make those mandatory for students to attend. The first class meeting for each individual grade will be the first Monday of the school year. Um, and we'll, we will be outlining all of, all of this information for them regarding behavioral expectations, attendance expectations, and the academic expectations. Um, and we plan on meeting five additional times after that this year, just because we're, um, again, that's if we're remote for the entire year, I hope that we're not. Uh, but that's just to keep the connection alive and also open up that door for students to provide us with feedback as well. Um, and also an opportunity for us to continue to, um, reiterate the expectations. So I just wanted to throw that in there, Ellen, regarding the class meetings and how we will, we will make all of these expectations very clear to the students throughout the year.
Yep, absolut- absolutely. Okay, um, for student supports, we, uh, there may be new families that don't know that we have directed study for grades six through eight. Um, this includes an advisory curriculum, um, that, that the, uh, DS, uh, directed study teachers do every eighth day, we will continue with that. Uh, these academic workshops, I think are going to be, um, a great addition because, um, the, the students will be doing independent work, but they'll have access to the teachers too if a periodic question pops up. Um, also, they can, um, email their teachers and set up a, in a, a meeting, a time to get extra work, whether that's during a flex day or after, after school, just, you know, the way that they do now. Um, also, the Monday morning check-ins will be a nice opportunity to, you know, get, get eyes on the students and see how they're doing, help them kind of organize their week. Um, all IEPs and 504s, uh, plans will be in place when distributed to teachers, obviously, and all of the accommodations will be met. Um, Lynn Jarvis, um, has been, has been working on all of that and getting that ready already. Um, ELL, our, our English second language learner students will also receive, um, small group classes and support. And so all of those services, um, will be, will be, um, enhanced. And, um, our remote counseling services, with the school councils will all still be offering social, emotional, academic support, senior seminars and other college and career lessons, and also offering their mental health referral services for families who, who need that. Um, all right, and so then a new piece, a communication plan, and this is, um, a, a new addition. So Mondays, we talked about, will be a great day for teachers to, to communicate with families and also to post those grades. And we know how important that is. Um, but we will also be, uh, bringing the AMSA weekly newsletter, uh, will return, it's so fun. Mike Finkel does such a great job with that, with pictures and videos and, and all. And we, we kind of dropped back on that in the spring because, um, Mike and Brianna and I was sending out, uh, uh, email every Thursday, uh, to update families. Um, but I'd love to bring the newsletter back because it's colorful and fun and, and Mike and Brianna and I will be, um, adding our updates into that. We will, um, along with the two family forums that we'll be having in a couple of weeks, we will also have, um, monthly family forums. And, um, to continue to get your feedback. And we will also, the, the AMSA, uh, communication policy, which is also found in the, in the parent-student handbook, will also still be, um, something that we will follow. And one, so the new piece that we've added, and I'm very excited about this, is we will be having a remote learning feedback coordinator. And this will be one person, um, that will be taking care of all the quick parent surveys that was, that we'll send out to parents and to students and to teachers, um, to find out how things are going along the way. So, uh, you know, checkpoints, um, to see if we're meeting the goals that, that we want to meet. There'll be one administrator that will be manning a new feedback email called, um, AMSA Remote Learning at AMSAX.org. And, uh, that person will also be, um, doing, as I said, the little surveys and collecting the data on that, and, and bringing that to Mike and Brianna and I. And, um, also to be manning this, this feedback and the email. And so I think this is going to be a really, a great way to kind of funnel all the information and all the feedback in one place. Sometimes what happens is it, it will get sent to me or to Mike or to Brianna or to a, to a teacher. And, and so I think this is really going to centralize it, um, and so that we can be very, um, very mindful of, of, of all the feedback that we're getting, along with the surveys and be able to track it in a much more effective way. All right, so that is, that is the plan. Before, um, and that's, that's my, my last screen, uh, there's also resources on the back of here. But, um, before we do that, I, I had one thought as I was, as I was presenting, and I, I, I think it was Tom Azeredo, one of our esteemed math teachers, who said that they, that he really feels that we've learned how to do a remote learning. Um, and Steve might have mentioned, mentioned it too. Um, that a hybrid system maybe sounds nice. I don't think it's the healthiest thing for AMSA, I, 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 we have too many limitations in our building, and I would be perfectly honest about that. Um, let me just come back to the meeting here so I can, I can see you. A hybrid system sounds nice, maybe. But it only gives your student access to a teacher really every other week. They are only looking at the teacher every other week. And although it may be in person, we're in a world now where students are, and, and teachers are going to be very separated. and, and teachers are going to be very separated. A teacher's not going to lean over the desk of your student to try to help with a math problem. You're going to get a much closer working relationship, I think, under the current circumstances, online. And your child gets to see and interact and has the same work as their peers at the same time because you're all experiencing the same thing in the same class. If you're in hybrid, half the kids are experiencing it on Week 1, half the kids are experiencing it on Week 2, but you're not going to be experiencing the exact same thing. You can't, somebody always loses. And it's probably the kids that are sitting at home who are doing a packet. If at least your child can sit in front of their computer and they can see their teacher and hear their teacher all at the same time, they're getting all of this material at the same time. And I, I do think that, that AMSA has, has a real opportunity here to do this really, really well. And that your, your kids are going to all get the same information, and there's going to be more equity in that than having half of them home and half of them in, in school.
Ellen, this is Jess, could I just interject for a sec?
Sure.
You know, I, I just, I wanted to say I agree with everything you're saying, and, you know, since we've sort of, I have felt a little bit more certain that we're going to be remote, that's allowed my sort of brain to settle into that. And I feel like at the last meeting, I was just so despondent about it. And since I've adjusted to that and started looking, and there's been so many resources shared, and the AMSA has added NearPod and a lot of other ways to digitally be more interactive. And for the first time since COVID happened, I'm actually looking forward to things at school and, and putting into slides in my PowerPoint that kids can click yes or no, or have a poll, or like, like drawing my graphs in my economics class. And so I, I totally agree, and I think that sort of having a decision, knowing what we're doing allows the brain to free up and to start saying, oh, let's deal with what's in front of us. And since that has happened, I, I really am starting to feel much, much better about being able to deliver a really quality education online that I, I just wasn't able to wrap my head around coming off of the spring experience. And, and, and so I, I am very optimistic and I'm, I'm feeling really good, and I, I think a lot of teachers are.
Thank you, Jess. I just to introduce Jess Bowen to, to folks who may not know that, that Jess is one of our, one of our teachers, high school teachers, AP Macroeconomics, AP GOPo, that's Government and Politics. And she's also serves as our Teacher Representative on the Board of Trustees, so she's a, a voting member on the board, for those of you who don't know Jess. And she has, yeah, no, it's okay, and she also has two wonderful children who graduated from, from AMSA. One, not this past year, but the year before, and then one in 2017, right, Reed? Yep, okay, see, I, I got it still. So, um, anyway, I, I will turn this over to, back to the board for any kind of questions you, you may have for me, or suggestions, or any other thoughts. And then the vote, as I mentioned in the slide, is, the vote is to, is to, yeah, to vote on the plan as presented, yes, no, or conditionally if you have things that you want us to address. But the, the importance of the vote, as I mentioned earlier, is that this plan does need to be voted on prior to the 10th of August. And then, as I mentioned today, we just had a call with the Commissioner, a very short call at noon today, when he gave us an extension, not on the vote, but he gave us an extension of time to get the plans actually put up on the website because, because honestly, ours is 22 pages long, and it took a ton of time. And I think other districts are, are seeing the same things, and many districts still are a lot, lot larger than us. So, Roger, I turn the time over to you.
All right, well, thank, well, first, thank you, Ellen, and your, and your whole mighty team in putting together this plan. I'm, I can't even imagine the, the effort required to put it together, and it, it, it does feel like a good, strong plan and, and totally different than what we did during the spring.
Thank you, Roger, I think it is, and I, and once again, just want to thank all the people who are involved in this. There were so many, I can't even, can't even name them all, who have been part of this work since the end of May, when we first started to meet about what we were going to do in the fall. You know, Mike's been working side by side with me on this too, as we were overseeing the project and the facilitators, and my gosh, it, what a, what a wonderful group of people we get to work with, so thank you. And all of you too, because you've all been a great support to us as well.
All right, well, so at this point, I think the next step, so the next portion is for the board members to discuss and ask questions regarding the plan. So I think at this point, I'd like just to ask board members to open up and ask questions. I think I'd like to suggest that each board member, if they wish to ask, to have like one question and a follow-up, and then pass the baton onward until questions are answered, rather than having one person take lots of time asking questions, does that make sense?
Hey, Roger, this is Rahul. Mind if I go first?
Go for it, you have the floor.
So for those that don't know me, Rahul Poris, I'm a trustee, I don't have any students in AMSA yet, I keep trying. But a one comment, and I, and I appreciate the fact that maybe we have, we're coming from a position of privilege as trustees, having seen the detailed document before others in the community. But if there's one thing that I can convey about that document is that it's evident and patently obvious that there was a lot of effort put into it and a lot of consideration into every single decision, which makes me feel comfortable about everybody's perspective being considered. It's impossible to have everybody's wishes conceded because there, a lot of, you know, different perspectives are conflicting. But I am confident that the thought was put into making those decisions. So for that, you know, if, if that helps parents and everybody else in the community feel more comfortable about how the process that went through putting it together and, and the output, hopefully it helps. One comment, well, I guess one question for Ellen to provide a little bit more detail, because I, I saw a lot of specifics about special education, and I know Jessica Hennessy asked at the beginning about that. So I don't know, Ellen, if you want to comment quickly about any accommodations or anything specific in the, in the plan for special education?
Well, actually, Lynn, so Lynn Jarvis is our Director of Special Ed, I don't think Lynn is on here tonight. Lynn, if you are, feel, feel free to pop in here. But I noticed that she's been working, she, as far as Lynn is concerned, her special education teachers are, are ready to, to, you know, go, go back to school, the paraprofessionals, and she feels confident that they can run a full program. And they will be working with, with parents, I did take notes when Jess Hennessy was, was speaking, and I will go over those with, with her and make sure that we have the parents. I love the idea of the parent resources, how we can help them at home. But I think that Mondays are going to be a good day for small groups to, to, to meet. And so I think that that's, that's going to be a good time for them too. Specifically, there is some information, and Lynn Jarvis actually did write up those few paragraphs about special ed that are in the plan. I think they're in the second to last section. And so I would say that, that the more details on that and ELL is found in the plan.
Thank you.
Rahul, did you, did you have a follow-up question, or are you good?
No, just a comment, which doesn't necessarily affect the plan and how it's written. But I think I saw in the hybrid scenario, the use of Zoom, where the students that were not in classroom will be following through Zoom. So just a comment on making sure we're testing that and making sure how that works because I could imagine that being a challenge with multiple, you know, with, with cameras and whatnot, and so I'm sure that's being considered, but.
It is, IT's been working on that. So we did, we purchased the very most secure Zoom that you can, that you can get, and so we're very excited about that, actually. And one of the features that I was talking to Erica about today is to be able to have a feature to run a meeting like this, but in a much more efficient way. And so this, Zoom is so much more interactive, some of the things that Jess talked about, you know, the kids can raise their hands, there's just so much more that, that you can do. And Google Meet is, is, says that they're going to do these things, but they haven't been released yet. So, anyway, we're excited about, about that, and, and the other program too that, that Jess mentioned, so.
Ellen, can, can I interject for one quick second?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I agree, Google Meet has not been meeting our standards, that's fine. Right now, I just want to make an announcement, I'm trying to livestream this as a webinar to our AMSA teachers on Facebook, and it has been working, and I've been using Zoom. I'm on this Google, and I'm relaying and transmitting that to, through AMSA Facebook Live. Like, you know, I was testing with a bunch of teachers, so it's working great.
Yay, Padmaja, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Rahul, Ellen, and Padmaja. And communication, it'll definitely be one of the big challenges we will continue to face. Next board, who else would like to ask a question? Liz?
Hi there. Okay, so I did, actually, based on some of the, the technical challenges that we had at the beginning of the call, I just wanted to clarify for everyone on the phone and live streaming. Your presentation will go out to the AMSA community as well as the full back-to-school document that you put together and the recording of tonight's meeting. All of that will be available on the AMSA site in the next couple of days, correct?
That, that is correct. In fact, Mr. Finkel is heading off on vacation, I believe, on Saturday, so we're, 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 you know.
I was going to say, so it'll be done before Saturday?
Yeah, it'll be done before Saturday, yes. I believe that we just put the final touches on version 8, based on, on a few more little tweaks that we made, so, yes, it's ready to go.
Okay, well, and so my follow-up is just thank you to you and your team for everything they've done to get this together because it was a huge effort that was done over the summer, so we do appreciate that.
Thank you, Liz.
Kristen?
Hi, yeah, Ellen, this is great, and I have to, I want to comment that I, I really do like the additive post-class sessions that you've added, it's really creative, and seemed like a great way to kind of keep everyone focused and give them a little bit of a, a mini-break from the extra-long classes so that they can kind of, kind of resettle even before a break, break, so I think that's great. I do have a question on, two questions on hybrid, actually. You know, when and if we get there, I think there's probably going to be more work that y'all are going to be doing to get to that plan. One of the big concerns that I have, or, you know, it's kind of been hinted or commented differently here or there, but consistency with the kids at home having access to the classroom experience while it's occurring, I think is extremely important to keep that cohesiveness amongst the class and to keep everyone engaged and to let them all experience it in both ways. I think it'll really enhance the learning experience for everybody. So I know I heard, thought I heard you say, you know, they might be doing a remote plan, study plan, rather than doing kind of an online, real-time screening. But I think it'll be a nice transition if everyone's already online, if they move that to the classroom and everyone can see it, I think that that would be really important, that was one. And the second one, which we didn't talk much about, and I don't mean to open a big can of worms, so I apologize in advance. But with respect to buses, if AMSA's going to be going all online first, how, how is the student body going to be able to join the bus system midway through the period? That was my other question, that I wonder if everybody had questions about, and I'll take that offline.
Okay, so, let's see, your first question, now I'm focused on the second question. Your first question's about remote, okay, so one of the things that Erica is working on is, is making sure, seeing, because we had this conversation earlier, if, if everyone can stream at the same time, and how to actually make sure that we have the capacity to, to do that. And to make sure that the teachers who do that, like, how, how do they do that? And do they need two laptops? And so she, she is definitely working on that side of things. And whether that's the best way to go, I agree that that feels like the best way. But I, I will be, also be very interested to hear from other schools and how they did it and what lessons they learned. I am very closely tied to, to the other EDs at, at all the other charter schools in the state, as well as some of the, our local superintendents also. And so it will be interesting to see how that works, Kristen, but that's definitely on our mind and how that, that's going to actually play out. The hybrid is very complicated, and it's going to be interesting to see how the logistics are actually worked out. It's, it does double up the work for teachers. Streaming might be the best way to avoid that, but there's going to be, have to, a lot of live and learn there, I think, for the folks who are going to start out that way. So we'll, we'll take that into, into our, into our processing that. As far as busing is concerned, so, you know, for the Marlboro students, we use, we have 10 buses that we use from, from Marlboro. They are where, I'm, I'm in close contact with Mike Bergeron, who's the superintendent of Marlboro. So they are aware that we're voting tonight, and he asked me to text him after, after this evening to let him know how things are going there. And so, but those buses are ours, so those 10, those 10 buses. Now, when you look at, at the end of not only the, the document, that, that, the back-to-school plan document on the very last page, and also on my last, this board report and the last one I did in July, you'll see that there's some links for the transportation. And there's all kinds of, what is the word I'm looking for, my over-50 brain? Diagrams of buses and how the kids can sit on the buses, and basically, it's a third capacity. So that gets very, very complicated. I know that for Marlboro, I believe the superintendent said that they're running four shifts of buses, and they're going to be staggering their day, which is going to be, once again, let's learn the lessons from the folks who are trying to do it and see how that goes. But it is going to be a huge challenge to go down to those buses to third capacity. And it's even more difficult when we start talking about the regional buses because of the cost involved, and how does that cost get covered, and can parents even afford that? This is, the busing honestly is one of the most difficult things, and, you know, I'm concerned about, about the buses and the bus drivers and those kids, and the windows have to be opened. And there's all kinds of regulations that go along with, with this transportation. And, you know, if the windows have to be open and the air has to be flowing through there, and I can't open a window in any of our buildings and flow any air through there, I just don't know where all of that lines up yet. And so it's going to be, it will be interesting to see how that goes. And when we start to talk about hybrid models too, we are talking about students, I don't think we really think about what this means. And the, the, the ASH, Mike Noracki, your wife works for ASHL, Lynn? The ASHL superintendent put together a great video where he actually put his school committee on buses and in a classroom three feet apart, and, and they realized just how close and claustrophobic they actually felt. It's great, it's online, take a look at it. But when, when we're talking about bringing kids back even half, we're not talking about kids being able to socialize. We're talking about walking single file down a hallway. We're talking about sitting in a cafeteria but being in a Plexiglas cubby. Now, let's think about that, tell me that is, isn't going to feel traumatizing to them. A Plexiglas cubby, they're going to be able to wave at each other through plastic. So don't, don't be under any impression that kids are going to get to socialize in school because they're not going to be. There is going to be one child or two child in, children in a bathroom at a time, and it's going to have to be a monitor outside that bathroom to make sure there's no more than one or two children in there at a time. This is not going to be a social experience for kids. It can't be because it's too much at risk. So, throwing that little piece in there. And so that's, the buses are one of the most complicated parts of this whole thing, Kristen, you nailed that. It's extremely complicated. And once again, I'm interested to see how it plays out for other schools. Let's, let's let them learn the lessons, and we will make good decisions, good decisions based on what the others learn.
Roger, this is Ben, can I have a question, please?
Ben, you're next.
Okay, Ellen, one excellent job, I really appreciate it. I like Rahul, like Kristen, like everyone echoed, lots of work put into this, really appreciate the effort. We followed you on this journey as we went through all the different board meetings, hearing from the teachers, hearing from the public comment was great. hearing from the teachers, hearing from the public comment was great. And, you know, just to reiterate, the public comment happening before this, there are those family forums come up. But I did have a question on the logistics that are laid out in the plan. Is there any major financial impacts based on our choices here and going forward with it online? I know we had to purchase Zoom, things like that. Is there any other major purchases a school has to do to, that may impact some of the school's budget?
Well, it's actually not going to, I think it's going to be a sum-zero game, to be honest, Ben. There's a grant that, there's actually three or four grants that we're working on. And one of them is, there's a grant that we're collecting information for right now. So Leanna's keeping a list. So every time something comes up, it was a few things today, I say, okay, Leanna, put that on the list. You know, $1,200 for this, or something for that. And then we will itemize that, and there's a grant that we will submit all of those costs. And we can get up to $225 per student. And that will be, all that money has to be spent by December 31st, and it has to be spent 100% of it on COVID-related items. So when we're looking at hybrid and we have to buy all the Plexiglas, Plexiglas is expensive. And so, once again, that's all on the list. And Eric has been working on that, Eric and Sean, through facilities with Anthony Montesian. Pete Jones has been working on that, Rob Luskey's been working on that. And that whole operations team, Ann Richards, Sarah, Snow, have been talking about that. So we're keeping a running list. We have, so we have $225 per times 966. It's like, is it $217,000 or something like that? And then there's a technology grant. And that, I'm not, I can't really say too much about that. That information's embargoed. But I think that we have some good news there. And there was another grant, there was a care grant that we also, it was like $20,000 that we used for some of the work over the summer. So I would say that we will be able to work within those budgets, and we're not going to see an impact there.
Okay, great, thanks. And the additional professional development for those two weeks, is that also included in those grants, or is that another? Okay, great.
Yes, it is. Isn't that wonderful? Because these are all things that we wouldn't have to do if we didn't have COVID, right? So anytime we say, oh, man, we really need X, then because of COVID, then we can include it.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. And that grant, the $225 apiece, is due at the end of August. And Leanna and I are working on that actively.
Roger, this is Sheila, can I go next?
Sheila, you are next.
So Ellen, thank you, like everyone said, and everyone, Brianna and Mike. And I know it's been a big effort. So I appreciate all the work you put in, and I know how hard it's been and how much of a struggle it is with uncertain parameters, right? One question, Ellen, I think one of the things, I know the spring was very sudden, and it was, you know, it was difficult. One of the things that I think people fault, and one of my fears for especially these incoming parents that we're hearing from with sixth graders coming in, is consistency. So when you say that Zoom is the platform, is that going to be required for teachers to use Zoom as their platform for remote learning?
Yes, yes. We're not going to switch back from Google Meet to Zoom. It's all going to be Zoom. We have two trainings that are coming up at the end of August. And for the time being, honestly, I've continued to use Google Meet, because that's what my meetings and things have been set up with. And I haven't been, I've been, obviously, I've participated a great deal with Zoom as a participant through the Charter School Association, that's all they use. And it's been exciting to be a participant with Zoom. But I can't wait to get trained on the backend to see all the things that we can do with it. It's really, really cool. You know, Jess mentioned there's a whiteboard, right? And all the participants can type in or even write in on the whiteboard. And there's all kinds of things that they can do. Put emojis in there and stars and all kinds of fun things that you want to make sure that the kids are constantly interacting with you, and that's one of the ways to ensure that. They'll be using that, and they'll be using Google Classroom. Yeah, all grades will still go in plus portals.
That's awesome. And I just want those parents, because I know we had a couple on the public comment, to know, I am a parent as well as a board member. My name is Sheila Kelly. And the one thing that we never had a problem with all spring was teachers being responsive when our kids had questions or when they struggled. You know, it was just so heartening to know that no matter what, they were going to be supportive, right up into including Ellen and the administration as well. So I want new parents to be confident that that's going to be the case. So thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. I do think, and I don't know how everyone feels, I guess I'm mostly speaking for myself. The spring was traumatic. I think it was traumatic for all of us. No one knew it was going to happen from one moment to the next for yourself or for your family. It was medically and emotionally, I think, a very, very difficult time for everyone, including our teachers. People were suffering emotionally for a lot of reasons. And we were scared. And there's still anxiety out there. That's for certain for all of us. But I think we've all realized that there are ways to keep ourselves healthy, and people are emotionally more stable now. And I think that's going to come out in our teaching and our administrating as well.
Roger, Cindy, may I speak? Thank you. Ellen, Mike, rest of the team, fantastic job. I really enjoyed reading this whole plan that you've put together, and it looks great. I honestly think that hybrid is the best, the only safest way to go at this point. Bringing groups of kids in and out of the building, I don't find to be safe for anybody. The teachers, the staff, the kids, their families, their people at home. So I'm glad we're taking our time and doing this the right way, I think, and watching other school districts, and let's see what happens to them. I don't wish any of them any harm, but if it's going to happen, let it be somebody else's and not our school that has something, you know, not so pleasant. So I think we're doing this the right way, and I think it looks good. The consistency, as you just talked about with Sheila, sounds great. And Jess, I'm really happy to hear that you're not only comfortable now with this whole thing, but you're excited about going into it and teaching remotely. And that's what we want all of our teachers to feel, and I think that's probably true. So thank you. So.
Yay. I think, thank you, thank you, Cindy. I think the first term really does give us time to watch this play out. Keeps us safe and well. I am completely confident in our teachers. I don't doubt it for a second. They're going to really rise to this occasion, just like they did in the spring, under extraordinarily really difficult situations. But we're going to do this, and we're going to do it well. And we'll watch the trends and we'll see what happens. Thank you. Thank you.
Roger, this is Maura, can I just jump in for one quick second?
Yes, Maura.
I want to obviously say, share all the other sentiments. Thank you to the team for all of the hard work, I mean, craziness. From the parent perspective, my email has been filling up over the past two hours. I would just want to summarize quick, and I will put a document together for the board to share the comments with you. The majority of them have all been in support of the remote learning for various reasons. And a couple of logistical questions that I'm going to encourage folks to bring up at the parent forums. I don't think it's anything that really reflects directly on the plan, but a little bit of technology, a little bit of new student orientation. But I just wanted to kind of share that sort of summary with everyone before we move into the vote. And thank you guys again for all the hard work.
Thank you, Maura.
Thank you, Maura.
Thank Jess.
Jess, you?
Yeah, I guess my question was going to be, the if and when we transition to hybrid, obviously, this, one of the nice things about this plan is that it gives us time to have, to kind of plan for this. But if and when we do transition to hybrid, the 10 PD days that we have now feel like they're really for us as teachers to prepare to deliver online instruction, which is really great, like, having that, knowing I have those days is really helpful for me. But will there, if we go to transition, will we need extra professional development time in terms of training on like how to walk through hallways and how we're going to clean hands and buildings and desks? And so have we thought, or maybe it's too early to think about that. But I guess I'm just trying to think about, it feels like, I'm feeling good about the start, but if and when we transition, I guess I have questions there. And my other question about if and when we transition will be, is our sense now that we're just kind of generally watching, because we don't even really know what questions we want to ask? But also, what, do we have a sense of what specific numbers or hard ideas will make us feel comfortable about moving to an in-person learning setting?
So Commissioner Riley has said that the state is going to issue some parameters over the next couple of weeks. Once again, I'm not really sure what to watch yet, Jess, right? Because he is extremely motivated to get schools open and running again. And so I'm not, I'm not exactly comfortable with the parameters that are out there. And I don't think anyone knows, because I still think it's a guessing game. And, you know, the things that I read about the schools that have opened up, and it's down south. And, you know, that's a really tough place right now. But it's happening in schools. Now, is it because it's in Florida or Georgia or Louisiana or wherever? Or is this, are we going to see this in schools as soon as we all start coming back together again? You know, they're still talking about the safest place to be is outside. Right, outside with the wind moving and still staying, you know, six feet apart, wearing a mask and all that. So why are you trying to put 10 or 15 kids in an enclosed space with adults? You know, I'm not, I don't understand it yet. I don't have the answers. But I think that we have to put probably a task force of board members together, and we have to put a group of teachers together, an administrator together, and let's collaboratively work this out. We have, you know, every time I feel like I'm stuck, I remember all of the brilliant people that I have around me and I have access to. We have scientists in our buildings, and we have historians who know how plagues work in the past. And we have biologists and chemists, and we have all types of brilliant people. And we just have to pool our resources together, just like we did this summer, and figure out what's best for our community, right? And I just, I believe in that. And every time I feel a little alone, I just remember. I remember all of us together and that we can figure this out. I don't know what the numbers are. And I remember very distinctly you asking me that question in July. And every time I tried to figure it out, I've read, I've looked at websites, I've clicked on links, I've talked to other executive directors, I've listened to Commissioner Riley. And they don't have answers yet. So we're going to watch, we're going to watch it over the next few months and see where our comfort level is, and we'll make it a community effort.
Other questions?
Thanks, just to follow up, yeah, Ellen, I think it's a very fair answer. I don't want you to feel like I am not satisfied. I think it's an important question to keep asking, but I do think that your answer is fair.
Yeah, let's see where it's, my husband just sent me a note, see where it's working. And, you know, let's find a school that it's working at. Can we make it work at AMSA? Are our rooms right? Is the HVAC right? Is, you know, is our space right? You know? Can we duplicate it?
Excellent questions. I don't think we'll, we don't have the answers yet. Guess I'll throw out a question myself. Some of the questions I've written down have already been answered. But so the biggest question I can think of is, you know, what do you see as the biggest risks for this current plan of the all-remote? Just targeting the all-remote plan, because that's how we're going to open the school year. What do you see as the biggest risk, and how do you plan to address them?
Students not showing up. I think that's one of the biggest concerns, especially the first period. How, you know, how often have they been getting up at 7:00 or 7:30 and actually logging in at 7:55?
For me as well, I haven't been up at 7:55 in six months.
Yeah, exactly. So I guess, you know, that's one of the things that when I look at the schedule, I think, oh, gosh. You know, but we have a plan in place, and that plan is to make sure that attendance is taken, that our receptionists know that that's going to be their back-on-duty for that. If, and parents are out of the habit of calling kids in absent, right? And so they need to get back in that habit too of calling their student in absent and letting us know. And if they don't, they're going to get a phone call. And so I'm doing all those things again that we did. And really putting it into the student's mind and cementing it in there that they are back in school again. This doesn't mean that you get to go play tennis at noon because you have a tennis time that you've reserved, because they could have done that before. And it's just the seriousness of this and really driving it home to them that this is a serious situation, they are in school again. They may be doing it from their kitchen table or their bedroom. But their grades are real, there's serious impact here, and we're going to track, and we're going to be on top of them, and we want to educate them. That's my biggest concern.
Roger, this is Ben, I have another question when it's my turn.
Go ahead, Ben.
So along those, okay, oh, sorry, go ahead, Jill can go first.
No, no, and then can I go next? I was just waiting, sorry.
Okay. So Ellen, along those lines of what you were speaking about, we talked a lot tonight about the impact on the school, impact on the administration, impact on the faculty, impact on the students. Have we thought about an impact on the families and offering any kind of professional development for the community to help out with this challenge as well? I wasn't sure if that had been thought through, or that might be the next phase of now that we've gotten through this phase, we can start talking about those options.
That's a great suggestion, Ben. I mean, the idea that Jess Hennessy, you know, spoke about earlier about tools and resources to help parents at home. I would love to put together a list of what parents think would be helpful. And we certainly can do that, because see Brianna Murphy over there taking notes already to see, you know, what we can put together to help people. I'm happy to do that. You know, if parents think it's helpful to, gee, put together parent groups or, you know, other opportunities to meet with Mike and I and Brianna, we can, yeah, Jess says she's happy to help with that. We can activate the PTO. We've got an absolutely phenomenal PTO. My gosh, the golf tournament, I heard was fantastic. And so we have all kinds of people that we can help. We had a group of parents that helped with graduation this summer. So, you know, maybe this is a time and an opportunity to really activate our families.
I'm a parent, can I have a question?
Not at this time, this is, at this time, this is a board discussion. We, there are the community meetings coming up where parents can address, can parent issues can be addressed.
Or they can email Maura too.
Yeah. Your parent rep is Maura.
So I have a question.
Yes, Jill.
So we are, you know, considering going remote-only, at least for a bit. Has there been any discussions about after-school clubs or anything that you can do remotely, club-wise, so that the kids have those kind of options?
Yes, yes, there's a little piece, this, one of the bottoms of one of the sections in the later pages of the plan. We just, we talked about sports a little bit, and a parent did, have mentioned that during open comment. We will follow whatever recommendations for sports is decided between Department of Education and between MIAA. That's one to put out there. You know, there's no easy way out of any of this. This is all a tremendous amount of work and responsibility. We take it very seriously. So by going remote learning, believe me, there's nothing easy about any of this. As far as clubs are concerned, yes, the advisors will be encouraged to start up their clubs again. There's ways, there were clubs that did run in the spring. And so we will, I'm the, Linda Edwards and I are the UNICEF advisors. And so we hope that we will get UNICEF up and running again. and so we hope that we will get UNICEF up and running again. And there's ways that we can do that. And the nice thing about Zoom, and I can't wait to learn how to do it, because I've taken part in it so many times, but the back end of it is to be able to do these breakout groups, right? So maybe we're doing something with UNICEF, and we're planning some kind of fundraiser, and we're breaking out into committees, and I can break the kids out in their discussion groups, and then Linda and I can go from group to group. So yes, there's all kinds of things that we want to do. We wanna make this as full of an experience, a full AMSA experience to these kids as we possibly can.
Exactly, that's why I asked, I wanna make sure you mention that live.
Thank you, thank you, Jill, thank you. Jess, are you gonna run QuizBowl?
Yeah, and this reminds me of a comment from Public Comment that you answered on the chat, but I don't think parents will see that, about athletics and following the guidance of DCE and MIAA.
Yeah, yeah, and Commissioner Riley mentioned that today. We had a very brief phone call with him, because, as I said, people were worried about the dates on these plans, and their committee, their school committee votes and things like that. He did mention that we should find out within another week about the agreement that DCE comes up with, with MIAA. So we are waiting that, but that we will follow whatever recommendations happen there. Mike Noraki works very closely with Pete, I've been in touch with Pete myself, and Pete's just waiting. He's waiting, he cannot wait to get things moving. But we gotta do so in a safe way. I mean, you know, Anders and I are big baseball fans, right? And Jess, Jess Bowen too, and always talking about baseball, but look what's happening in baseball. And why? I don't, you know, I think there's some things that then maybe not doing well. Maybe the basketball is gonna do a better job. But, you know, the Patriots, we're dropping players like crazy because of this. And so I think we have to be really careful, yeah, the Red Sox are in trouble. The Yankees are doing really well this year, unfortunately, it's gonna be a rough, rough season for me. But, you know, I think we just, we just have to kind of watch too what's happening with the pros, and then we will, we will follow whatever recommendations are given to us.
I think every club that's out there, hi, it's Jess. QuizBowl, actually nationally, all the coaches all over the country, there's talk of how we're gonna run tournaments are happening. There were summer, like, kind of trial, like, ways to run them online. Apparently, I have to learn something called Discord, which my children are going to help me learn, which sounds horrible, but whatever. That's what we have to do, us old people. But yeah, so I think, I mean, even things like I watch Saturday Night Live do like online shows from their little, like, skits, like, maybe, I think there's so many opportunities for all of the clubs out there. Good to know, Roger, thank you. To make opportunities for kids to participate and connect with each other. And I think that there's lots and lots of opportunities out there for all of these things. I don't think we need to sacrifice those things.
Yeah, thanks, Jess.
Roger, I have one more, that's okay, and this will be my last one, I apologize. So Ellen, you know, I'm a parent of two kids, one in going into eighth grade, and I do have an incoming student, right? From fifth to sixth grade, starting. Have you thought about the orientation of new students into AMSA, not just the sixth graders, but others joining to, one, they won't have ever met some of the teachers, or been in the school, or experienced any of the in-school piece, they'll only know online? So is there any thought about an orientation for the new students in this new world?
We're definitely gonna run remote orientation. And Mike and Brianna and I will be doing, and some of the other folks will be doing orientation for parents too, like a family forum for new sixth-grade parents, and family forum for new, older students. So we are working on dates for those things. As far as bringing them into the school, hopefully they participated in a tour in the fall, well, before things shut down in the spring. But I honestly, I hesitate to bring, to bring groups of kids into the school. The whole reason we're not going into school is because we don't feel that that's the safest thing to do. And so, but the teachers will be at the orientations. So the whole sixth-grade team will be there, so the kids will get to, you know, talk to them and interact with them. But the teams are working on those orientations right now, and they will be on Monday, the 14th of September. So that is a PD day for the teachers. Typically, we run it the day before school, so we're following that same pattern.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah. And we can break them out, Ben, too, we can break them out into like DSs. So you can have them in a group, and then you can break them out in DSs. You could even have them, it'd take a lot of coordination, but you could have them kind of move around a little bit, and within, like, little mini-groups. So we'll see, we'll see what we can come up with.
All right. I'll throw out one more question, but I think we've, so, a question I haven't heard tonight, but I think I've sort of heard it in passing either, is what about labs or things where the school equipment would be needed? And how do you manage labs or things like that? And how do we assess the overall effectiveness of our program?
That's interesting, so I wrote that down too, because the teacher, yes, please, sorry, husband's getting a hamburger ready for me. I wrote that down, one of the parents mentioned that, and it's gonna be a question that I'm gonna ask Scott, on how does that work? If I have, I don't know who's on the line, but if I've got Joe Benjirvani, or Kristi Jagowski, or Sarah Mortimer, or any of my other lab folks, feel free to jump in here if you have any thoughts. But I think that is something we need to think through, and honestly, I'm not, I'm not well-versed in our way. You know, I mean, I know, I can walk in and know what kids are doing in a chemistry lab, but how that translates and gets done at home, I'm not exactly sure. So that is definitely something we need to think through, and I can, I can talk and meet with Scott about that, to see what his plans are. And I'm sure that they're gonna, they're gonna work on that. But that's a very interesting thought. Now, you know, if there's, you know, I mean, I'm just kind of thinking outside the box, but there's ways, if there were materials that needed to be picked up for a certain home assignment, you know, there's ways that we've done things. I'm gonna leave it in Scott's hands, he's very, very capable. I have a lot of faith in that team, so.
Yeah, and maybe not necessarily a question to answer now, but maybe at a future board meeting is, think about, the question I have is, how do we assess the effectiveness of this plan? We've come up with this amazing plan over a, over a summer of really hard work, but how do we measure that it's being effective, that it's being successful? Or finding ways to improve the plan through the year?
I think there's a few ways to do that, and I'm gonna make one, I'm gonna make a comment, but Anders, I want you to get ready to throw your thoughts in here, okay? So you're hearing me? And I'm just gonna respond to the first part of Roger's question, and then I'm gonna ask you for follow-up. So I think some of the surveys, having that one centralized person that is going to be the central survey person for teachers, for students, and for parents, I think is gonna be essential. One place where everything's going to get funneled, we can ask very specific questions. And these are not going to be surveys where it's a 50-question survey. These are gonna be one, two, three questions, zap, 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 zap. Collect that data, how's it going? So that's gonna, I think the way that we're gonna be able to gauge how the program in and of itself it is, how that's going. But then for the teachers, they're used to assessing how their students, and that's what I want Anders to address. They're very used to assessing how their kids are doing, through homework and through exams. And I think that they will have, be able to, on a more micro level in their class, be able to tell whether their kids are producing and comprehending at a level that they used to, for the same material. Anders, would you like to just jump on that, about assessments, and how are we going to?
Yeah, we were actually talking about that today with a couple of the teachers while I was out at the golf course. So there always will be traditional ways to assess the kids, you know, through essays, through homework assignments. Lots of teachers have been talking about independent projects that people can do offline, that kids can do offline. Assessments certainly will be a little bit trickier, because we are very interested in the integrity of the assessment. So we're going to have to put our collective heads together to figure out the best way to assess students in a way that ensures the integrity of the test. One of my fellow history teachers, Peter Prue, was talking today about the use of Google Forms as a possible way to give a student a test in a way that is close to ensuring the integrity of the test. There's going to be a need for some outside-the-box thinking, there's going to be a need for a lot of communication between teachers, a lot of sharing of best practices, and a lot of communicating between departments as well, to figure out what is working. But I can assure you that we are all, I think he said that in Jess's comments, we're all very excited, we're all very determined to work together to figure out what will enable us to get a good sense on how our students are doing. And, you know, that's always a key to good education and to learning, is figuring out how our students are doing. And I have no doubt that all of us at AMSA, all the teachers and administrators working together, are going to figure that out, and we're going to do a really good job of that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Anderson, Ellen, that's a really, really good answer, really answered my question. More questions? Hearing no more questions at this point in time, and really emphasizing that this is a live document, this is not something that's cast in stone. We're going to continue to polish and improve upon it, and get new guidance from the state, and who knows what, you know, this is, this is not, this is not something we're gonna throw in the box, lock away the key, and forget about, this is a living document that we're gonna, the administration and teachers and everybody's gonna work to improve upon.
Absolutely, this, as you said, Roger, this was really just, this document is a requirement from the Department of Education. We had to create something that was very uniformed. They gave us the topics that they wanted addressed, and it had to be uniformed in a very specific way. And, but, but this is, this is gonna be changing over time, because this situation changes very rapidly.
You know, I don't, but not only is it, this document meets the DCE requirements, but this is the document that is the starting point for the AMSA school year. This is AMSA's special sauce, this is not a, something that's a throwaway document that we put in a safe and forget about.
No, no, this is, this is it, this is the plan, this is the foundation.
This is the foundation. So given that, I'm not hearing any more questions at this point, and there'll be plenty of opportunities to ask questions in the future, I'd entertain a motion to approve the plan as written.
I'd like to move that the plan be accepted as written, knowing that it is a constantly changing document. This is Cindy.
Yes, I have motion from Cindy to approve the plan.
This is Jay Ly with second.
Was that a second from Sheila? We lost Sheila, I believe I heard a second.
It was, that was Sheila.
All right, any other final discussion or comments?
Do you need a roll vote?
Will you do a roll call vote? Starting with Raul, our usual order. Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jess?
An enthusiastic yes.
An enthusiastic yes. Maura?
Yes.
Sheila? Ben?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Roger, yes. Motion approved unanimously.
I don't know if you got Sheila's vote.
Yes, we did. Sheila said.
I said yes.
Everyone has said yes. Thank you, everybody, I will take a motion to adjourn, or do we, or is there, sorry, we had a, was there any action that was identified from the meeting, such as, it's one example of an item, which I'll maybe ask Ben to take the lead on, would be to figuring out our transition plan to Zoom.
Yeah, I can help support that.
All right.
Roger, can I make a suggestion as we do that? I'm trying to put myself in Sarah's shoes, and she's been doing, she's a living memoir of the school. She always takes the minutes and notes and records everything that happens in the, in the board meetings. I can't imagine doing that and having to deal with the connectivity and the muting, unmuting, whatnot. So I don't know if we can find a role, and I don't wanna dictate who that is, but, you know, maybe help on who's gonna be the host.
Right, good point, we can, good point. I'm hearing the suggestion to split the two roles, adminitaker and moderator.
With Zoom is better, because you can actually define that on the spot.
Yeah, let's not, let's, sorry, let's not solve it now, but I think, I hear you, it's a great idea. Other thoughts for meeting effectiveness?
Just so you know, I was working with Erica today on Zoom, trying to figure that out, so I'll be on it.
All right, we'll be, we'll be working with you, can I put you on the team there?
I do wanna just thank everyone, just take a second and just say thank you. I'm getting text messages, my phone is blowing up from our teachers. And they feel your support and your care, and I want to, I just wanna thank everyone for your support. This has been, this has been quite an experience. I said at the beginning, and I continue to say, the things that are hardest in life are the things that make us the strongest, right? We come together, this has been hard, but boy, we've really grown. We've grown as a community, we're growing as educators in ways that we never thought we would have to. It's been painful at times, but gosh, thank you so much for your support, we really appreciate it, and we will, we will make you proud. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ellen, it's been a, this is, this is a once-in-a-lifetime, once-in-a-hundred-year event. You know, I think we've risen to the challenge, we'll need to continue to rise to this challenge. It's not, and, but, you know, sort of savor the moment and savor what we are doing. We're making history right here. We are making history. This is something you'll tell your grandchildren about.
Thank you, I'm sure, I'm sure we will, they'll be tired of hearing the stories in no time at all, for sure. Thank you.
So with that, I'd like to take.
Oh, sorry, I just wanted to thank you all as well, there's been so much really negative feedback out there about teachers in general, and about hybrid learning and whatnot, and I'm so appreciative that you guys have approved this plan, because this has been a huge stress for all of us over the summer. And just to know that you support us and trust us to create something that's really good for our students means the world, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, this one, just, last thought, because Brianna just triggered my thought. There have been times when it's been physically painful to listen to the leaders at the top of our education organization, the way that they talked about teachers. And I, and it's shameful. Our educators have given their whole hearts and souls to our kids. I am grateful to be in a position to be able to support them, and show them how much we appreciate them. They, they are passionate, wonderful adults, they did not get into education to put their life and their, life of their families at risk. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to keep them safe, to keep your family safe, and our children safe. Thank you, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ellen, with that, I'd like to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, it's Cindy. Just seconds.
Give Jess as the second, I need one more roll call vote, and we will call it a fantastic evening. Raul?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jess?
I'd like to stay and talk some more. No, I'm kidding, I vote yes.
That is a yes to yes. Maura? Maura?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Roger, yes. Motion passed unanimously. I'd also like to thank Samini for joining us. She was our board member in waiting as soon as we get the DCE approval. And so thank you. Thank you, everybody. Great meeting.